I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the class.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hand.
We're going to start off the meeting doing our student liaison interviews.
Jessica.
Do you want to grab a chair and not look serious? You're on the spot, I'm sorry. What's the question? Is that how we did it last year?
We've done it fairly the best.
Okay. Are you okay with that, hon?
Well, it was...
With everyone staying in the room?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll just have to look if you have a bad answer.
So, we're just going to get each of you, just so you know the process, each of you has the same four questions for the positions. We appreciate the updates on upcoming events and the happenings within the high school. However, we are more interested in hearing about what is really going on with the students themselves. What types of questions will you ask your fellow classmates to be able to give us details about their thoughts of what's going on in school?
So, like, this is like saying during the school year, what would I have to say?
Yeah, what would you ask your fellow classmates, like, with different concerns or whatever you would have?
Well, I'd ask them if there's, like, any concerns, like, to bring up, obviously. I'd ask them how they think the school year is going so far. And if they like, like, whatever events are going on, like homecoming or, like, homecoming week or anything, I would ask them if they like those events and if they want to get more involved with the school. And that's really it. I would just make sure that they like how, like, the school year is going so far and they don't have any major concerns.
Can we reorder that, to ask that third question next?
Ask the third question? What was it? Last?
No, next.
Oh, next, okay. How do you plan on getting information from other three buildings?
From the other three buildings? I plan on attending any, like, events, like, from any one of the other three buildings. And then I'm also, a lot of the people at high school have younger siblings, so I'm planning on asking them too about anything that's going on in other three buildings.
What are your thoughts on the subject of race and ethnic inclusion and exclusion at Maryvale? I know that this one's hard.
This particular question kind of feeds into the very first question as far as it's, what we're looking for from the student liaisons is not someone just going to kind of come here and paint a happy picture on everything that's going on. Yeah, we want to hear the events and stuff like that and, you know, see the happy, cool things that are going on. But also, we want to kind of, like, meet at, like, some of the subjects and what's really going on more behind us and just the feeling across campus on important matters like this.
So, this was about, like, race and ethnic? Mm-hmm. Well, I know Maryvale started, like, the high school started, I think it was, like, a...
A group?
Yeah, it's a group. I'm sorry, I was trying to think of the name.
It's about this long.
And we started the group this year, so I was planning on getting involved with that next year just to hear about, like, any concerns that anyone has. And I know we've been pushing for, like, to make sure everyone gets included and everyone feels comfortable in Maryvale, like, in their own skin, and I think that's a good thing.
And last question, which I'm sure you're glad to have. Why do you think it would be a good fit on the board and how would you bring information to us?
I think I'd be a good fit because this is giving me the opportunity to really put myself out there. And I already talked to a lot of students in Maryvale, like, a lot of them know me and I don't even know them. They're going to start talking to me about, like, subjects that they feel, like, concerned about. Like, this was happening a few years past, so it's going to continue this year, I'm pretty sure. So, I'll be able to bring that perspective to the board.
Okay, you're all set. Thank you so much, Jessica. Great job, yes. And next we have Mohammed. Okay, so I'm just going to ask you the same questions, okay? So, in regards to, so what types of questions will you ask your fellow classmates to be able to give us details about their thoughts of the school?
So, like, for this year, out of the school year, so it was, like, concern about the code of conduct and the dress code. And we still know that students are well into, you know, whatever it takes to get a better dress code. So, I think getting to know them and what they want better out of the dress code, or out of the code of conduct would be, like, important. And just generally, like, knowing information about, like, events that they want to see or have questions about, that, you know, whether it's sports, homecoming, prom, and just any event in general.
And then, how do you plan on getting the information from the other three buildings?
So, during my high school, you know, kind of like I was, I've been back primary school over there. So, I kind of already have some experience on it. And during this year, I was actually, I did, I think it was math night, it was a math night, primary, and I wrote a report and I submitted it to a hot, you know, an example, and I just wanted to see how it was. And middle school, I think I can just attend, you know, events and then, you know, having cousins that are going to also give me information.
Good. What are your thoughts on the subject of race and ethnic inclusion and exclusion at Maryvale?
From a teacher's perspective, I think they're all fair. But from a student perspective, you kind of can get around it because, you know, students aren't teachers with their mind, because they don't think the same, you know, in the same level of experience respects. I've seen here and there that there's, you know, issues of race and ethnicity. I didn't even experience it myself, I'm not going to lie, but I think teachers are, in a stat, you know, are doing a very big job at handling it.
And why do you think you would be a good fit on the board and how would you bring the information to us?
The reason why I think I'll be good on the board, I think my communication skills really are decent because I kind of throw myself at, you know, things because I try to be as active as possible. So, I can get around everything, you know, have people talk to me, see what their problems are. I can, I have a very good way of reaching out to them.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, for the rest of you too, like, when we ask you a question, if we're not actually voting ahead because of all this rate. I assure you, we're listening to what you're saying.
We're listening.
Trying to get it written down.
Oh, Jack. Hi, Jack. So, what types of questions will you ask your fellow classmates to be able to give us details about their thoughts of the school?
I'm asking them about how they thought that all the events have ended. If they had any problems at the event or any concerns that they want to change at the event. See if there's any new ones that we could possibly get started in the school research. Maybe, like, what they want to see changed at the event if they go wrong at the event.
Okay, and how do you plan on getting information from the other three buildings?
I plan on attending the events at the other three buildings. And maybe reaching out to other students in my school that have younger siblings. And reaching out to the current school for a teacher at the building that could possibly have that did event to see how they thought it might be a different perspective from what they had.
What are your thoughts on the subject of race and ethnic inclusion and exclusion at Maryvale?
My thoughts are, like, we did start the club in high school, but I feel like we need to maybe expand that so, like, everyone can be included. Or, like, do different events that help, like, show different cultures in our community and in our school district and not just high school, but in all the four buildings.
Okay, and the next one. Why do you think you would be a good fit on the board and how would you bring your, how would you bring, how will you bring information to us?
I feel I would, I have good communication skills and public speaking. You know, be able to show all perspectives of all the events in the school and any concerns that the students are having about things in their school district. That's what they want, what they want to have changed in the school.
Very good. Thank you so much. And next I have Emma. I'll start with the first question. What types of questions will you ask your fellow classmates to be able to give us details about their thoughts of the school?
I would ask questions about how they feel their school experiences going. Is there anything that maybe other moms see that only they see and stuff? Like, if they attended events, if they feel things should change, stuff like that.
Okay, and how do you plan on getting information from the other three buildings?
I plan on, like, looking into events they have and attending myself. And I have two younger siblings in middle school and they're pretty social, so they can tell me stuff that's going on there.
And what are your thoughts on the subject of race and ethnic inclusion and exclusion at Maryvale?
I don't really see a lot of, like, problems with that myself, but I know other people have problems with that. And I think we should do more, like, kind of, high school have, like, altar day. They did questions. And if you did that in other schools too, that would be good, I think.
Okay, and last, why do you think you would be a good fit on the board and how would you bring information to us?
I think I'd be a good fit because I could bring a lot of information to the board. I listen to people, I'm pretty good at listening. And I think that I would be able to bring information to them.
Yep, perfect. Okay, you're all set. Thank you so much. Okay, I hope I said this right, Shane. Okay. Is that how you say it, honey?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, first question. What types of questions will you ask your fellow classmates to be able to give us details about their thoughts of the school?
I'll ask them about how they feel our school events, clubs, and I only got those subjects in schools. How they're learning, how they're going so far. I ask them for their opinions too, for their friends' opinions. And if they feel comfortable with everything that's going on, the new changes that are happening to the school. And I'll bring them back here.
Okay, and how do you plan on getting information from the other three buildings?
I recently just joined Student Ambassadors and my sister kind of, I attended. And I have two older sisters, one of them is primary and intermediate, so that's both schools. I get some data of information out of. And hopefully, I get to have, I have a lot of cousins, so I get to get their opinions too. And attend a lot of school events and bring that information.
And what are your thoughts on the subject of race and ethnic inclusion and exclusion at Maryvale?
Maryvale's done a good job at including a lot of race and people from different ethnicities. They have an international club and a cultural event, which was really nice to see being from, like, to face myself and being involved in it, which I really enjoyed. Hopefully, I can join the international club this year. I have seen a lot of, like, backlash on a lot of kids for, like, you know, being different race or ethnicity. Having to sit on the bus in classes. But hopefully, you know, it's easier and it changes a bit.
And why do you think you would be a good fit on the board and how would you bring that information to us?
I'm comfortable sleeping around many people. I've done it before in front of auditorium. I know many people. I have a lot of friends who've been in the Maryvale community. I know a lot of teachers. I'm very defensive of them. And I'm just comfortable with everyone and all the school members and staff and everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. And Ryan.
Thank you so much. Very, very good. I know you guys are on the spots.
The next presentation requires fresh market.
View. Slide show. Okay. So, my name is Kelly Hubler. I am the school social worker, grade six through 12. And we started, I guess I started thinking about it because Mr. D'Angelo sent an email not long ago and said, hey, here's this resource. And I was like, oh, okay, cool. We, you know, we use the K through five backpack. And I'm looking through, I'm like, oh, we're connected to Feedmore. And I'm like, wait, a school pantry? So, I started digging into it. And I started digging into it and I started thinking of all the families that I've worked with over the last couple of years that have struggled with food insecurity and also access to food. So, we have food pantries all throughout our community, but a lot of them are 10 to 12 on a Tuesday or, you know, 2 to 4 on a Thursday. And so, I, I'll never forget this call. I had a family call me on Friday and say, I have nothing in my cupboard and I don't get paid for an entire week. And I'm thinking to myself, she's got, you know, three kids in the home, a cat, well, a couple cats. And how is she going to provide for this family? So, luckily, we have this sweet little lady on Elwood and, you know, Cedar Grove who does kind of an emergency pantry out of her house. So, we were able to kind of link her with enough food and she was able to get some, you know, hot dogs, chicken nuggets, things like that. But, but it's a gap in service for us, right? We have K through five backpack program. And that is every student that apply, well, every student that signs up can take a bag of food home every Friday. So, it might be, you know, pasta, pasta sauce, peanut butter, it might be granola bars, some of the non-refrigerated milk, enough to kind of sustain them for the weekend. But it stops at fifth grade. So, we have really hungry sixth through 12th grade kids. I mean, they're just looking in my drawers, they're hungry in the nurse's office, you know. The more committee is always providing snacks for everybody. So, when I started looking into it a little bit, I was like, this is, this is awesome. Like, we could do this. So, so I created a little team. I had a lot of people say, you're doing what? I want in. So, so here tonight, we have Sherri Fula, she's on high school special ed. Leah Hoffman, middle school special ed. Nicole Floss, who's our instructional coach currently. And then also not here tonight is Lori Meyer, who's our high school nurse. Melissa Stryker, who's our middle school nurse. Amanda Moose, who's a Spanish teacher. And Kevin Anzic, who's also a special education teacher in the middle school. So, we're really excited. We've been working really hard. The food pantry is going to be located in the high school next to the nurse's office, across from the main office, so in room 48. So, we're working on kind of organizing the space right now. Charlie's been great updating electric and getting things ready for it. What else do we have? Our family, our pantry, so let me, I guess, go through my slides a little bit. Our partners, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about our partners and what they've kind of brought to the table. So, Feedmore Western New York, which is, you know, previously the Food Bank. And then Healthy Schools and Community Grant, which is something that we've been partnered with. Our mission is to eliminate hunger and food insecurity in the Maryvale School District by providing access to food, promote nutrition, increase self-sufficiency, and instill hope. Our vision is to engage the community to find solutions to hunger and food insecurity in the Maryvale School District. We will provide awareness through education, resources, to acknowledge that the struggle against hunger, poverty, injustice, and hopelessness are one and the same. And one of the things that, you know, that we've also recognized too with our school's grant is also being able to provide families with nutrition, recipes, options for them to pick healthy meals. Because if we send high school kids in, they're going to come up with, they're going to come up with all sorts of great things that they want to take home. But we want them to also, you know, help them create balanced meals. So, we have opportunities to create recipes and have kind of like some organized, like, pick two from this food group, pick one from this food group when you shop. It's going to be family choice so that families can choose, right? I don't want anybody to pack my groceries. I want to pick what I want, right? Well, whatever family likes. We're hoping to be culturally sensitive and be able to provide foods from all different ethnicities so that families can shop. We also are going to be creating some kind of, like, highlights and specials. So, I do have a recipe, but the slide didn't come up too great, but I'll show it to you in a minute. So, we are going to be able to maybe prepackage those specials. So, maybe for Thanksgiving, we might have a Thanksgiving meal that's pre-packed. Where high school kids can volunteer their time. They can come in confidentially, prepack bags. They don't know who they're going to. Then when the families come into shop for their regular groceries, they can then take a bag of the specially packaged meals. So, that's volunteer opportunities, holiday meals, things like that. So, we're going to have fridges, we're going to have freezers, we're going to have lockable cabinets, recipes, labels, baskets, nutrition, fresh produce. We're going to order a Dolly's so we can kind of roll things in. And so, there's a lot of opportunities for the kids to help us with some of these things. Some of those heavy lifters that can lift, you know, boxes. We're going to work on fresh produce. I'm not sure if we've found a piece of equipment yet to have to keep it cold just yet, but we're working on that. Soap, fruits, vegetables, proteins, canned goods, hygiene supplies, detergents and cleaning supplies. I think that even the price of laundry soap is going up, you know? And I work two jobs and I think that there's a lot of, you know, people that have these growing kids that are, you know, that are struggling. So, we're going to hope to have maybe different, you know, opportunities for people to donate. You know, like I said, laundry soap, cleaning supplies, even, you know, if you have young, if some of the families have young infants or babies, different things like that. So, the sample recipe didn't come out good, but I pulled it up on my phone. But how cool is this? It's a seven can chicken soup. And it's literally seven cans, right? Pentobees, southwest corn, black beans, chicken broth, tomatoes, you know, canned chicken breast, enchilada sauce. And then if you want, you know, people have opportunities, they can always add in, you know, lettuce and sour cream and things. But, but you can make a healthy seven can chicken taco soup. And that could be something that's fun for the high school kids to kind of package or, you know, put recipe cards in and things like that for some of their volunteer hours. So, I'm going to hand it over to Nicole. She can talk a little bit about kind of her magic with creating a beautiful space for our pantry.
So, I'm just going to, just kind of track here. One of the things I was working with, I worked with our general supplier after talking to Feedmore. And they let us know, gave me a list of different vendors. And we met, we looked at the space, we measured everything out, and we figured out what we're going to need, what are our possibilities now, but then also with the ability to grow in the future. This is just getting us started. And so, everything that we've done, we were ordering, we really took into account what we need in that space, what we can fit in that space, but then also with the ability to grow if our space grows in the future. That we could do that. So, working with Feedmore, right when Kelly was starting to work on this, before she said anything, I had just taken students down with a number of other people in the district. And Mrs. D'Angelo, we went down to Buffalo State and we went down for a youth voices conference. And one of the things that was so striking about that was that our students went down there to share their work and share their right and their process. And one of their biggest takeaways was that they were fed. And it was really amazing and upsetting to see, but it really struck, struck a chord with us. And then shortly after that, the East Side tragedy, we had a school, school-wide food drive that our middle schoolers had put together. And it really gave them the opportunity to help and to heal and feel through that helping. But once again, one of the things that came out of this was that our students were hungry. You know, they were helping, providing food, but what we ended up doing was I partnered with things like my neighborhood and I would bring in food every day. And then the students would go to my car and get the food from there and bring it in. And they were so proud to help, but they also started to tell their stories. And I started going down to Feedmore each day, dropping this food off. And I started hearing the stories and the possibilities. I swear, it was like the next week that Kelly came and said, do I have a food pantry? Yes. And then it all starts to come together because we have the Healthy Schools and Community Grant. And so, then we start to learn more about that. And Feedmore has already spent $15,000 in materials with us to get us what we need for this pantry, along with covering the full expenses for the weekly ordering at absolutely no cost. Then we start talking to Healthy Schools and Community Grant. And I've already worked on that in the schools way with Mrs. D'Angelo, but then to find out, we don't need to compete with the school. We don't need to take that money because we can get, we can go to the community side of it. So, we now have, for the next four years, we have that lined up, we have that contact made, we have our wish list already pre-approved with them, and we can add to it. So, that's huge. I'm working with our, our middle school girls' STEM club and they were working on a garden grant. Now, the grant got, we got denied this year, but the feedback said, if we had something to do with the food and if we had more partnerships, we'll be approved for next year. There we go. And so, you know, looking at partnerships, what could they look like? Definitely look like the girls' STEM club. They've already shown interest. They want to have lettuce towers. They want to give us fresh produce. I met with a teacher over at Casey Middle who runs a kids' do-gooder club, and they want to help us. They want to be a partner school that they don't know where the food is going. They don't know exactly, but they want to have a partner school where they help put together and supply some of the things that we could supplement for our baskets. So that our kids might be putting it together, but we might be getting the food donated from outside the community as a way of sustaining. We want to possibly hook up with the senior center at some point, so I'm looking at you right now. Because we're looking at possibly growing this into having a possible, a possible greenhouse in the future. And we have insurance from our 1211 teachers of both the middle school and high school for helping to take care of the future greenhouse, which we also have pre-approval for funding through the community. So, we have, like, ways that this can also grow in the future. This isn't open up and we all feel very passionate about it.
Anything else?
Well, and we don't know how big it's going to be. We're not looking to be, you know, one of the largest pantries in Western New York. We're looking to feed our community, right? So, it's small. It's going to be, you know, a small little program. You know, we do have an opportunity for kids to shop online. So, if they are, you know, at a football practice, but they can't come right away, but they can at least swing by, they can order online based on what our inventory is at times. And they can order online, submit their order, and then we can have either ourselves or kids package it. We're not sure what the hours are going to look like yet. We're not sure what, you know, whether it's going to be once a week. But certainly, we're going to be available for those emergencies because we are going to be in-house. It's going to be our pantry. It's something that if somebody called me, I'm not chasing down Sweet Janet on Elwood Avenue in Cedar Grove saying, hey, I have a family, a few home. So, we'll have access to that. So, I think, I think it's going to be great. We're really excited. It's, there are 14 pantries, like, 14 school pantries in the four counties. So, Catarachis, Taco, Erie, and I can't remember the other county. Nine of them are in Erie County, but six of those nine, I'm sorry, 12 are in Erie County, I'm sorry, and nine of those 12 are in Buffalo. So, I don't know what the other three schools are, but we're, this is like one of the first. Bonnie O'Brien from Feedmore was really excited. She's like, you guys are one of the first low-income districts to do this pantry thing. So, we're really excited. We think it's got a lot of opportunity. Like we said, we don't know how it's going to, like, how big it's going to be or how much the need is going to be, but it's going to be available for what's needed. So, we're excited. Anybody have any questions? It sounds awesome.
I did want to mention one thing that we talked about with Feedmore, that it doesn't matter where, what they're getting services from, if they're getting food from other pantries. It doesn't count against them if they're getting food from here too. So, they don't have to pick, well, I'm getting food from here. So they don't have to pick, well, I'm getting food from here already, and now I'm going to lose some of that if I go here. And it gives them, we're going to try to make it like a store so it doesn't seem like a handout, so they can get what they want, which is the free choice.
We'll have lockable cabinets. It's going to be, you know, we're going to have baskets with labels and, you know, beautiful recipes and, and different things to decorate the space so that it feels like, you know, it's wetman's. My office is going to be in the same space, so I'm going to be living in, in wetman's.
That's not a bad thing.
It's not a bad thing, you know? But I think, you know, being able to close the cabinets when the pantry's closed, being able to kind of close things up so that it does still feel like, you know, my office, but then, you know, for families and kids, but then also being able to kind of have it, you know, the lights go on and, you know, the doors open when we are open, so.
And we're going to communicate with the community and the families throughout, but it's also open to students. What we found out when we were working with Feedmore is a lot of times families aren't getting services that they need or that they're eligible for because of shame or because there's something, and the, the kids know if they're also hungry or need food. And so this will be another option for giving them directly access.
And although this school pantry is designed for sixth through twelfth grade kids, because Feedmore provides K through five backpacks, it's going to be open for our district. So if I have a family that reaches out to any of us that says, you know, we need some assistance, you know, certainly it's, you know, we have, we have kids from, you know, some families have kids K through twelve, so, you know, so it's going to be available for, for everybody, so.
This is wonderful. This is what y'all are doing. It's great. How do these families find out about your services?
So there's a letter that I'm working on that goes out to all of the great, all of the sixth through twelfth grade families. And so if a family is interested or feels that they would be, you know, benefit, they'll just reply with their household size, age, things like that, if there's any like food allergies. And then we're going to log them into kind of like a database so that when kids come in, they can just, you know, because we have to keep data for Feedmore. Because they're the ones that are providing us with all the food. We put our orders in, they drop it off at the loading dock, and we, you know, put it away. So they need to know basically how many people shop each time is really all the data. They don't need any names or anything confidential. So we will be sending out a notice for the families, sixth through twelfth grade. But then again, you know, if a family K through five reaches out and says, "Hey, we want, you know, services," we can offer them the backpack program, but then we can also offer them connections to our food pantry or to, you know, whatever it is that they need.
And PR for the name would be great. And we even thought really hard about the name, Ladder's Fresh Market, because we wanted it to have a positive connotation. And we want the feel, everything that we purchased for it, we really want that feel to be positive and welcoming. And so I think presenting it in that way through social media with everyone would be great as well.
Yeah, we also need a logo, so. Get t-shirts or something. Aprons.
Where's the, where would the greenhouse be if we go, if we did it?
In the middle school courtyard. Um, I mean, and we were beginning, I made a contact with a, a Canadian hoop house and greenhouse, builder distributor. And so they were looking at our area, and they were, they were coming up with possibilities. They were looking like through GPS at the, at the, and I'm out there measuring like where the drain is. Mr. Frank is like sees me through. And I know it's something that.
From like this big to like half the courtyard.
So we have possibilities, and I have like several contingency plans. You know, and it might be something that we start small and grow. But it is definitely something that we've had school interest for, for quite a while. And I think if we get community interest as far as taking care of it, we need to look for sustainability before we actually put anything there. But it would be a great place for it because it is protected. And it is within our, our school, and it has outside, so, you know, that's one place that we were looking.
Will you also be asking for like donations from like within Maryvale?
Yeah, we kind of, and stuff like that. Yep, yep. We can, we can put our purchase orders through Feedmore. So as we go through stuff, right, we're only going to order what we need if we only have five families, ten families, twenty, whatever. We'll order what we need to keep things, you know, fresh. But then if we also are having like things that we're running out of, but they're in need, you know, we can ask the community if they're interested in donating shampoo or deodorants or, you know, winter stuff. You know, I don't have a huge space, so we have to be really, I think we have to be mindful of what we ask for. Because I don't want to say, we have a school pantry and everybody drunks everything off that they own in their cupboard at my door. Because I also, because we also really want to create it to be a beautiful space. So we want to be able to say, the month of September, we're going to be looking for specifically, you know, laundry soaps, right? October, we're going to be looking specifically for, we need, you know, this money, you know, that kind of thing, so that we can kind of keep it, keep it kind of structured, but also, you know, not overdo it that we're now taking extra time to then drop off stuff in another pantry because, you know, we have too much stuff, so.
We, we definitely want to be mindful about the way we start it and the way we grow it. You know, so start it manageable, but have the possibilities for it in the future.
So at this stage, what's working?
Well, I.
I don't think much.
We're going to need PR support.
Yep, PR support.
Maybe a grand opening we could do, have the board there, that'd be nice.
We were hoping to do, yeah, we were hoping to have like, I was trying, we were hoping to get it done by orientations, but I'm not sure when the equipment's coming in because everything's on tap orders.
Everything is, and it's been, you know, we had to make sure we could get everything through the doors. And so then the ordering, you know, that was like, we got quotes on, and we only have thirty, I don't know, thirty-two and a half inches, not thirty-three inches, and it changed everything. So, I mean, things should be coming in, but we were told by the end of, end of August that things should be in. But, you know, I don't want to say that for certain.
And you have information for orientations.
Yes.
You still get that out?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
And we could definitely make like some kind of, I think some kind of like a commercial video that would just be like a little splash of what, what it's going to be. And it's just great if you guys are, you know, supportive, right?
For sure, definitely.
And because this is the first of its kind, this is a new model for Feedmore. Since they partnered with, a couple of years ago, when they partnered with Meals on Wheels, they said this is now their next, their next change is that they're going from these centralized food pantries and being onsite downtown to having smaller onsite food pantries at schools. And I know some other schools, like Amherst did their school pantry, but outside of the school. They did it at Lutheran Church. You know, there are a lot of like community pantries, but this is going to be direct access for students, which I think is.
Especially if parents who can't get out, maybe the students can bring it home, you know, on their way home.
And everything is going to be, we have privacy in mind. So we've even, like, we're ordering certain bags that don't look like grocery bags for the students to take with them because we don't want any of that stigma to get in the way of them accessing what they need. And even though, we talked about the window, you know, like if a student doesn't want to come in, you know, and submits an online order, they can literally just schedule a time to come up to the window and hand it out the back window. You know, um.
A little emergency window that opens.
You know, which is just, so we're trying to keep all those things in mind.
Very good. Thank you very much. I think it'll be awesome to reach out. I think it'll definitely be utilized.
We're excited. You know, I'm anxious because I'm like, is anybody going to come? Like, here we are. But I, I feel as though, just based on my experience, when I think logically, the stuff that I've seen the last couple of years, I, I know it's going to be utilized, and I know it's going to be a huge thing for our.
Kentmore High School has a, a store, a clothing store within our high school, which is something that we also want to go visit at some point, you know, just like thinking in the future. But it's very popular, and it's, it's very well utilized, so I think that this will touch on.
And even our cultural groups can help us with, you know, some of their little projects, maybe to make sure that we have certain things stocked and make sure that we have, you know, items that, that families, you know, want to cook with, you know, that they can enjoy. And it's not, you know, what do we have left in the cupboard today, but we can actually make a meal, you know, a healthy meal, especially these athletes. Oh, my goodness. I don't know how, my kids, I think they keep eating and eating and eating. They're all in football, and it's like, holy cow.
When it expands, how much room do we have?
Well, we have enough for what? Do we have, what do we have right now? Two fridges and one freezer?
Yes, but it was tight. So we were able to purchase two refrigerators with sliding doors with display doors that you can see into. We couldn't afford to get a freezer like that, so we had to get a freezer that opened. And the same thing with some of the locking cabinets. We looked at getting ones with rollers, like that you could just pull down, so they wouldn't take up as much space, but then they were cost prohibitive. So we got ones that were like, had opening French doors, so that limited us. And we know right now with the construction that we didn't, you know, space is an issue, right? And so in the future though, it is something to consider, seeing how this, how this goes. Because the storage room that we have is a closet that is two and a half by six and a half feet. And so we have shelves to fill it, but that's pretty much it. So that would definitely be a future endeavor at some point to see what kind of space we can have.
Yes, we're going to have to contain it a little bit right now. My, my little office space is getting smaller and smaller. I keep moving things over. It's getting a little squishy in there, but I think, but I think, you know, we're going to serve what we have, right? We're going to, you know, if we have this much, then that's what we, we offer. We're not going to, you know, overextend ourselves, I think, to the point that it becomes unmanageable. But we have, you know, a decent sized team. There's seven or eight of us, and, you know, between us, I think we can, you know, we can manage it. And, and we, you know, pantries share all the time, so if we end up with overstock, we can, you know, call St. Luke's or, you know, come over at Resurrection Life and, and, or Janet, you know, we can call her and drop off some stuff at her little house. She's the sweetest. So.
Any more questions?
Thank you. I already have so much time. Thank you.
I was going to offer, Mrs. Hodges not here, but if you need more space, I'm sure she'll give you her office. She's got a rolling cart.
All right, Mr. Swinton, you may recall at June meeting, Mr. Swinton presented the code conduct. And at that point, we were asked him to lead a committee in the summertime to take a look at the dress code. And at that point, come back in August if your order changes. And at that point, we would ask the board to approve that meant dress code. So I'm going to let him tell you about the process that he engaged in, and then.
So two processes really. One, and probably what turned out to be most important, is we engaged our school attorney and basically had a review plan. The code, the dress code, in relation to anything that would be gender specific, with the goal of trying to identify a dress code that is gender neutral, if that's a better term. So that proved actually to have lots of changes, to be completely honest with you here. Then, once we went through the recommendations of the attorney, we then brought to the COVID conduct committee that was formed back in April, we basically reviewed the recommendations of the attorney, and then really made those changes with consensus. You should have three copies, I think, that somebody did change, right? So you should have the original code, you should have the original code, you should have like an annotated code and then a final version. So I'll just kind of go over the annotated plate. Annotated plates, keep a piece of it. But if you can see things that were striked out that, you know, for example, just before number one, including hairstyle, color, jewelry, makeup, and nails, again, kind of gender revealing there. Number two, removing, including bra straps and underwear. So it would just read, under, or shall not be visible. The next line it says, those exposed cleavage and bare shoulders, backs in midriff. It would now just basically say, CK garments are not permitted, and tops must meet the waistline of the pants. Again, kind of more of a gender neutral, you know, kind of approach. Also, we're removing short skirts. Short skirts, dresses, and any variation would give them two inches of large finger. To be replaced with clothing that must be modest length. So that's pretty much the, the crux of the, I think, what we kind of were asked to review. Through our process with our attorney, we added a little nugget about hats. So that's what we'll probably spend more of our time, because that really was quite interesting. So in nineteen ninety-three, there was a commission regulation that stated that schools really can't ban hats, except really for in the classroom. So that regulation and its history pretty much kind of disappeared a little bit. Probably saved, came out for those of you who may remember back in two thousand, that kind of, you know, became no hats, hoods, backpacks, all those things, you know, from column by. Well, in the last year or two, basically that has resurfaced, and people just like this started to question dress codes and that sort of stuff. Basically, that, that, that regulation pretty much allows students to wear hats, you know, in the hallways and not areas because they're considered to be more of a fashion kind of thing, and you really can't really see the student fashion. We took, take it a step further because, believe it or not, our original number five, if you can go back to read that, it said classroom. We actually, that's okay. The concern that we have though is now, it's going to be a very difficult thing in, you know, our, and then to tell them, you can wear them in, you know, the cafeteria, you can wear them in the halls, and get in the classroom, take them off. We felt that put a lot of undue pressure on our teachers, so we thought we were just going to allow it to happen. If the students wear a hat or something of that nature that would feel as disruptive to the learning process, we always have number one, be safe, appropriate, and not disruptive to the educational process. So if someone comes in with one of those big giant like, you know, hats that I see like the banner themes, you know, that type of stuff that, you know, kids can't see behind, we can say, listen, that's, you know, that's disrupting the educational process. You know, things with fancy lights and, and stuff like that, we can, you know.
I'm sure they won't even think about.
What will happen is it'll happen for a bit, and then hopefully it'll die down. But we've had hat days before, right, you know, in our, our school, and all schools have, and kids learn still that day. So that, that, that was a, was that a surprise change? Well, it wasn't a surprise change. Well, it wasn't something that we were looking at cutting into. So what you'll see is number five really now, just dress codes. We did as committee feel, and there is no regulation against codes. We did feel that, and I would argue as a principal, and if Mr. Frank was here, they'd keep with you, the fact that students are not identifiable on cameras and stuff like that, no person is wearing their clothes are on. In the environment that we kind of are working in, I think it's kind of important. You'd be amazed at how we get, hey, this person, you know, between us and Bo sees and stuff, there's a lot of crossover sometimes, and you'd be amazed at how many we get, here's a person that's walked by my classroom, and I have never seen them before in my life. We go to cameras, we look, and if they had a hood on or something like that, it makes it more concerning. So we are going to keep, we recommend that we keep hoods in. Things like bandanas came a topic, you know, under the Tinker law, for those of you who take the US Treasury and government. You know, students wearing black armor bands are protesting, we can't tell them we can't. So we wanted to make sure that we had done that, but of course, bandanas are always gang affiliated mentality. So that's why number, number ten, we put in not including clothing or accessories that are associated with identifying the symbol of a gang or street. What does that really mean? We would have to feel that they're wearing something that could be getting affiliated and kind of could then ask that question. The, the rest of it is number seven is just we added spiked collars, spiked bracelets, again, to try to remove a gender possible, you know, kind of piece to that. Number nine, we added marijuana because originally marijuana fell under illegal drugs, and now marijuana really isn't the only one, but we still obviously don't want it in our schools. So we wanted to have its own little separate piece of it. And like I said, number ten, we added accessories and kind of blew that bandana. So I would say pretty significant changes to our dress code here. Do you have any questions? But it's pretty significant. It does seem like for our attorney, because he gave me some language, he was working on one of the districts. I think we're a little bit ahead of the curve a little bit of the districts, but it definitely seems like a lot of districts are looking at this piece. Because to happen, he had to, you know, oh, he understands it, but like within ten seconds, because I'm working on it right now in the districts. So whatever other districts are there, their process of this, I don't know. But I definitely know it seems like there's more of them coming. And the goal for us as a rule rating, it would be gender biased.
I think that law in ninety-three kind of speaks to the, the state ed department is, is indicated that they're going to be more willing to, should challenges come their way from school districts, be willing to scrutinize those challenges, make sure school districts are following regulations, whereas, you know, they, they weren't for years doing that.
And he does think it's possible, but it may be something that comes next. Because the whole, it's a, the commission regulation of the hats directly talks about it's a fashion statement. And then although us old people may think it's disrespectful to students, that's, it's a normal fashion thing that people wear nowadays, which is probably even more true than ever, to be honest with you. In ninety-three, I was a sophomore here, I think. So. So the, I, I think he thinks that, you can see that, because hoods are very fashionable right now for kids today. But we think that this is, we should probably just hold up there for now. And we'll revisit it if we need to, based on guidance we're making. So Sam can't go after, you know, young ladies for plunging neck. So Sam can't go after, you know, young ladies for plunging neckline, things like that anymore. Just really, it's gonna be, you know, waistline, pant, you know, shirt has to meet the waistline. But that's pretty gender neutral, it's really.
James, I feel a question coming. You had that look, I wasn't turned.
And I will, again, I will, I will move around and tell you, I just was checked by our attorney. And that's really where we went first, with the exception of having hats not being allowed in the classrooms. But she did think that just from making logical sense, like, why are you going to have those conflicts now? All day long, with teachers in classrooms, take that off, why? Because if that's, that's supposed to be allowed, I just, but we'll do it on hat day. You know, I just, we felt that that would just cause an undue conflict that.
So we have to hold a public hearing, public, or, you know, comment session, session. Before we, we could prove it, so we need to hold one up, I hope.
Can I have a motion to open the public session? Public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Anybody like to speak on?
Anything regarding?
Mr. Frank, nothing?
Anybody other than Jay?
I think that the shirt meeting the waistline of the pants is gonna be a hard one this year. Because I think it's a fashion statement that is very popular right now. So I'm just putting my two cents in that I think you're gonna be up against that a lot.
I, we have been, so I would say in the big piece of this, that, that doesn't change. Again, the language that he recommended was that language that he was. But yeah, I mean, that's the number one issue, that number one issue wasn't addressed, you know, necessarily. But there is no way, do we allow it or we don't, I mean, that's, that's it.
I don't disagree, but I do agree with her, you are gonna, it's gonna be a hard one to put, hard one to put, I'll throw it on.
And the commissioner ruling was interesting, that, you know, they go through and they explain it in detail of their thought processes, you know, what other court cases are involved, and other decisions that go through in law and constitution. And one of the things that was interesting, you know, talking specifically about that, is it, it does say in there that if you can make an argument about how this is preparing kids for career, for moving on out of high school, for college, that some of those rules in those Code of Conducts can be acceptable. I, I personally don't see going into any place of business, other than maybe a gym, where people are wearing outfits like that for their employment. So, I mean, we are also educating students on, when is the appropriate time to dress like that and when is it not?
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you in that at all, like.
Neither am I, I just think that it's going to be a big problem, because I think that it's a fashion, and particularly for girls, boys don't wear half shirts, so I do hear your saying it's just control, but it's not.
It is definitely disproportionate, but we did have a few boys who did.
Okay.
But I will notch, it's obviously very disproportionate.
Mr. Swinton, that was one day you did that.
I made a comment, I said, if you're gonna do it, then I'm gonna do it.
Wrong, rails is public.
It is.
If there are no more comments in the public hearing, we can close the hearing.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Sorry.
All in favor?
All right.
That be accomplished, I'd like to write my board approval, the amended Code of Conduct is presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, James.
If it gets sent agenda, I would recommend that the board approve the financial personnel consent agenda items one through four as submitted.
Can I have a motion?
A motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion passed.
For this next section, there are 17 personnel consent agenda items on the agenda, placed in 18th one, an appointment for long term, so there was a resignation after a recent appointment. And being so close to the start of the school year, we're just trying to button things up as best we can in hopes of locking them down with the board's permission. I would like to add that as number 18 in this area, rather than wait till the 22nd.
Can you pull out number two?
I will.
Okay.
Is that okay with number 18?
Yes.
Yes.
And we will approve these in three actual motions, having pulled one out for an extension. And I would recommend that the board approve personnel consent agenda item number one as submitted.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I would recommend the board approve the personnel consent agenda item number two as submitted.
Can I have a motion?
A motion?
All second.
All in favor? I'm staying, I'm gonna stay on one. Motion passed.
Then I would recommend that the board approve the personnel consent agenda items three through the new 18, including, as now submitted.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. A second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion.
Going on to new business, the first thing is the school property tax rate. I would recommend the board approve the tax rate as presented.
Can I have a motion?
A second. Yeah, I'll do that at the discussion, is a motion in the second? All right, I'll use that as the discussion phase. Basically, at this stage, the board's approving the tax rate. The tax rate is set to be thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Again, it carries out six decimal places, if you want me to take it that far again. The rate last year was fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents per thousand. So it's a dollar six cents less than what it was in the current school year. Again, assessments are going up, you know, so it's a balancing and wash. You can make an argument one way or the other, it will depend on your own property's percentage of the hold this year relative to what it was last year, after all of your individual changes. So, but overall, the tax rate itself is what the board will approve. Again, the tax levy is within the tax cap, it's presented. But we would ask that the board approve the tax rate of thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents per thousand. Add a motion in a second, if there's questions or more discussion.
Any questions?
So, just, what was that again, fourteen ninety-two down to thirteen?
Eighty-five.
Any questions? All in favor? Motion passed.
And then as part of our capital out of the project, there's the state environmental quality review. When we look at his personal impacts, and would ask that the board approve the negative declaration for that item.
Can I have a motion?
A motion. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion passed.
Last item, for new business, like to ask the board to approve the first reading and then do policy updates as submitted.
Can I have a motion?
Like the motion of approval, with second reading. A second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion passed.
And their whole business, like they recommend the board, do the second reading of the proposed policy update.
Can I have a motion?
A motion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
DCP has got the first hearing of the school's last.
That's fine, you're welcome.
We're gonna need the board's approval of these two plans, before they're submitted to the state. Timmy, you have any comment on the two plans before we?
So, yeah, so the DCP is the district plan. It's tied to the school improvement funds that we receive for the district, which is fifty thousand dollars. The DCP is actually just aligned to the strategic plan. There's no point in having two separate plans for the district. The only difference is, this is the template that plans are required for the state for approval, whereas our strategic plan was in a different format, even before we were required to do a district comprehensive improvement plan. Regarding the SSEP, this ties specifically to intermediate school, and this is tied to the seventy-five thousand dollars they receive each year in school improvement funds. And really, it focuses on how they're further developing the work that they've embarked on the last couple of years, rather than going back to square one and starting over again with a different plan. So if you compare these to last year's, you'd see a lot of similarities, because really, they're focused on how can we further enhance what we started, rather than going back to the drawing board and starting from scratch with a new one.
Questions or comments on those two points? Then I'd like to ask the board to approve the district comprehensive improvement plan.
Can I have a motion?
A motion.
A second.
All in favor?
All right.
And separately, I'd like to ask the board to approve the school comprehensive education plan.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
All second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion passed. Do we have any resident input today?
Yes.
There wasn't a doubt in my mind.
Hey, that's why I come.
It's not a bad thing.
Nope. No, because I'm very, very, very excited to hear what I deserve about that. I tell you what, that really, then I had a call and talked to them, as a matter of fact, I was asking if anyone was invited to residential life for Wednesday morning. And of course, the lady who was speaking is a speaker then, so that's great. I tell you what, there's a great need for it, broke my heart last year, one little boy I had, he came out, he was, couldn't do nothing. So what's wrong? He says, I'm hungry. Said, mommy feed you? Nope. So we always had food there, we always had snacks there. Went to see Mr. Slajuski, gave him something to eat, made sure he got his water. After he ate, I mean, he was fine. Yeah. For me, being as old as I am, we never saw any of our kids, okay? Well, we're seeing it now, and I, I, I do never wanna see these kids hungry. I really don't. And for you guys to open up room and buying all this stuff, getting the freezers and everything else, I'm, I'm really proud of you guys, I really am. I'm very excited to hear that Mr. McDermott now is the vice president of Duca. I am no longer, thank you, Lord. But I tell you what, it was exciting to be at their board meeting. They have different ideas, and this is what you need, once in a while, you get stale, you get some, somebody else there. But I tell you what, I wanna see a marriage between the community and this school. Even with Duca, maybe these ladies come and speak to us about what they're doing here. We get the community involved, let's get everybody involved in this, because we are community, we are, we are family, let's face it. So we are starting our first meeting September 1st, and great, when are you gonna pick the new liaisons?
At the next meeting, we have a couple more interviews, and then we'll decide.
So maybe in October would be the first liaison to come?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, we were talking about all, all kinds of different things, I'll let him talk to you about it. I'm not gonna steal your, your time.
You gotta come to a meeting to find out.
There you go. We do need a secretary, anybody has spare time or nothing to do, we need a secretary.
I have a lot of spare time.
But again, it was really, this was exciting to hear about the pantry. I think it was drawn up a while ago, wasn't it? But now it's coming to fruition, and it's gonna be exciting. And again, hopefully we can even put something in the primary school too, all right? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I thought you were gonna weigh in on the half shirts on our administrators.
The what?
The half shirts.
I heard that. For me, wearing a half shirt, no. See what the babies do, you know, forget about it.
Do we have any updates on your county school board?
Boards in group?
Yeah, boards in group.
Oh, boards in group, is the next thing. Um, my, my, are you calling me?
No, I can't call.
Okay, um, our work session. We just gotta make sure, is everyone good with that date for the virtual meeting? August 30th at 6:00 PM? Are you gonna send the link now?
Yeah, it'll be, it's a special meeting, virtual meeting, and then a really open meeting, and then it's an executive session.
Okay. And we just wanna go over the board reps for each school. Me and Ron will go last, because it doesn't really matter to us, because we don't have kids.
Our kids are done, so.
So, we'll take, we'll take the leftovers.
I'll do the high school.
Do you have the, she met?
I'm, I'm very willing to do primary and middle, or one or the other, because I have children, obviously, in primary.
And you're there.
I'll be all of them.
Obviously, I'll probably be at primary and we at middle, so I really prepare.
So you have high school, you have, what do you have?
I have, I have, will have a student in primary, two in primary, and one in middle.
I'll do intermediate.
So you're primary, intermediate, change your high school, now I'll, I'll come middle school.
Okay. And then, how about I just be the backup for whoever can't go? And I just randomly show up at stuff anyway, so, that works.
So if you guys are having good fun, just make sure you let us know.
Anything else for that?
Oh.
The other thing was, if anyone's interested in going to the convention, it's October 27th to the 29th, and it's in Syracuse this year, so you just have to let Sheena know if you're going this year. I, I really wanted to go, but I know there's no way I can do it, because that's what Bethany's do, so. Your grandchild is coming on the 29th. October 27th to the 29th, and that's in Syracuse.
There is a Notre Dame game.
Yeah.
I remember that.
It'll be a little nuts. So book your hotel now if you're gonna do it. Yeah.
Who's on our audit committee?
You have all the other ones, I'll start, right, okay. Do we, anything else that we have to go over for our work session? I think I have them all. I guess we can close the meeting. Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
A motion? Oh.
James, a second.
All in favor?
All right.